The Board of Commissioners meeting this morning, we have Pastor Darryl Sellers here from the Church of the Nazarene to give our opening prayer. Thank you Pastor.
I was told I can say whatever I want, so you can take that up with whoever needs to be taken up with, but first off, I want to say thank you, members of the commission, for having me here, it's an honor and a pleasure. I have a mentor that has made a ministry almost forty years now of going into churches that were not so good, whether they were close to being closed down due to moral certain situations, financial situations, or just basically not being in the church. And when you ask him what was his, why his success, what can he attribute his success to? He would say, "I would always surround myself with people smarter than me. I do not want to be the smartest person in the room." And it's an extremely, I have a life in business, I've tried to do the same thing, just out of habit, I guess, but it's not just a good business decision, but it's also a biblical one. I'm thinking when Solomon, King Solomon, wanted to give his son some advice, he was talking to Re- Rehoboam while he was a prince, and he, in Proverbs eleven fourteen, it says, "Where there is no guidance, the people fall; but in abundance of counselors, there is victory." An abundance, see, he, Solomon wanted to do more than just tell, teach his son about surrounding himself with wisdom, he was also conveying to him that it was, it's never good to go it alone. There's always strength in numbers. We've all had that, that illustration of a, of a bound cord, and when you parade them together, the stronger it becomes. So my challenge to you as commissioners, in leading and serving the same community that I serve, is that we each surround ourselves with the wisdom while, with on the commission, but also look to surround yourselves with wisdom in your own personal lives. Let us pray. Father, I thank you so much for the servants that are here to lead and direct the, the business of this county. Lord, we all serve the same community. We're all called and, and we're not here by accident or by chance, we're here because, and it's no secret to yourself, you've ordained this situation, you've ordained this audience. Lord, we ask that you give us the wisdom of Solomon, that we may make those decisions in accordance with your will, and that you may be victorious in the land that we serve. We will give you the praise and the glory. Lord, I ask that your abundant grace fall upon each member of this council, that's one that's outgoing, the one that's incoming. May your wisdom fall upon them, may you guide and direct their steps and their actions, and may it be for your glory. It's in Jesus's name we are praying. Amen.
Amen. Whenever a pastor tells me they have permission to say whatever they want, I get a little nervous, so thank you.
I didn't pass a point.
Thank you for being here. All right, first up, we got courthouse renovation update, we'll, we'll jump right into it. Derek, good morning.
Morning. Morning, everybody. Appreciate you having me this morning. Think, uh, think it pretty quick here. Weather's been great, weather's been great for our work, so it's the first thing, but as far as schedule's concerned, doing good. Four seventeen, still a substantial completion date, haven't had any issues thus far, knock on wood. But, jump right into where we're at and where we're going, start on the outside. As you saw last week, we had a lot of stuff going on on top of the, on top of the building. Started with removing all the existing HVAC equipment, getting that removed from the top, and then started into taking the chimney down, bringing it down to a, a little bit lower level, turning that into an access hatch for Scott. Past couple days, you saw him out there grinding away at the joints, getting ready for that, taking those joints out, they're gonna replace them, re-tuck point them, and then they've been washing, and then later on today, have a meeting with our QAW to review some samples, try to match the, the mortar color for the new joints, get that taken care of. And then on the street, on ground level, last week we started the water main tie-in. So they got that done out in the road, gotta get that patch back up, got it up onto the property itself, working hopefully by the end of this week, have that line into the building, that'll be one less thing to worry about, that'll take care of the, the water service and the fire service. And then from there, they'll move into the site sanitary, that'll be the next big thing for them, as far as utilities are concerned. Truly where we're at on the exterior, a couple things that are coming up, roof demolition and the dough asset. So getting all the existing rooftop equipment off the building, that'll allow us to start on putting new stuff back. First step will be removing by section, a phase process of removing the roof, we'll start with where the new rooftop HVAC equipment will go, get all that peeled back, we gotta do some structural revisions to make sure the building can handle that, get that steel in place, and then put the roof back, and put the dough as unit on. You'll see a crane out there for a day, come in, set that, and get out of there, so that'll be a big step for us, and from there.
And when you do that, will you be bringing the bell down at that point in time?
Yes. I will, I don't know if we'll bring the bell down, that's kind of something I wanted to talk about as well.
Okay.
Once we do bring the bell down, where are we putting it?
I'd think that's what I was getting ready to say, I mean, we just need to find a landing spot, maybe in the front somewhere.
Yeah, we'll set it, uh, set it away from any, any traffic or anything like that.
I just don't want to bring a crane in separately.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that, that'll come down, it's part of the project, so.
Okay.
And then a landing spot, we'll, we'll find a safe place for it until we find a permanent home for it. So that'll come down, uh, that, yeah, the, the dough asset, that's a big, big deal for us, that'll allow.
What is that?
Oh, sorry, uh, the dedicated outdoor air system, so that is the lungs of the building.
I'm sure these guys knew what it stood for, but I, I didn't.
Yep, the, sorry about that, yeah, that's the, the primary HVAC component for the building, that'll feed all the air throughout the, the entire building, so.
Okay.
So that's a big deal for us. Uh, moving inside, on the third floor, you walk up there right now, you'll see all the offices, all the courtrooms, they're there. Framing is in place, blocking is going on, should be getting pretty close to being done with that. All the electrical, um, you'll see MC cable, which is a pre, a prefab cable assembly that ties into boxes, that stuff's in there. Here shortly, we'll start on over, overhead electrical, get that rolling. The refrigerant lines on the third floor, those are going in right now, it's very tedious work, a lot of copper going in, so, like them to be precise on the first go around, not have any issues there. From there, fire suppression, guy or fire, they're on site, they've just about got the third floor put together, they'll move down to the second floor later this week. Insulation, the ductwork, the ductwork is pretty well completed, they're about, I'd say ninety percent complete on the third floor. The insulation guy, they've been chasing them all throughout the third floor. Moving down to the second floor, uh, probably next week.
And the ductwork got cleaned out?
Yes, ductwork has been inspected, they have it sealed up, they'll provide a report on the cleaning, they've done leakage tests as well, we've passed on that specification, we're in good shape there. And then upcoming is drywall, that'll be a big thing for us, before drywall goes on, there'll be some security measures put in place, and bullet resistant panels, some security mesh in the holding cells, and then drywall will cover that up. So that's kind of where we're at, the third floor, the second floor, it's fallen pretty closely behind as far as mechanical, electrical, and plumbing goes, they're doing well there. Not a whole lot difference, and then the first floor, here, probably later this week, early next week, they'll start painting the first floor ceiling, getting the, uh, the filler coat on, and then getting that ready, uh, before all the mechanical, electrical plum, uh, plumbing stuff goes up, just a lot easier to paint, get a better coat, rather than trying to wrestle around pipes, go from there. They do have a little bit of conduit ran for the primary feed, um, into the building on the first floor. Framing, they got a little bit to do there, carrying the walls up from the existing level, taking it further, uh, further up to the ceiling level. Yeah, that's kind of where we're at and where we're going. Couple of big things, the roof is the biggest thing this summer, that's our, our biggest concern, so.
So we'll know about any sort of rehab, as far as the cracking, the cracking?
Cracking, that, that process is nearing completion.
As far as the roof?
The roof, yes, that'll be, once they peel that up, they'll take inventory of what's there, identify what cracks need, need to be addressed, um, they've got everything from the bottom side of this, on the ceiling side, but they still have to, as you know, pull it up, investigate from there.
Okay.
So that's where we're at with progress and where we're planning to go. Any questions as far as that's concerned?
Sounds, sounds good.
All right. As far as a financial side of things, a budget, a soft cost budget, no changes from the past month, we had a, a couple of things from earlier, I want to say it's Patriot Engineering, and then RC Engineering had some costs, but, um, that took place a couple, a couple months ago, so that's there. The primary budget, we're still, still in good shape, no changes from there. As far as the contingency is concerned, uh, we're still sitting at about four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, uh, still in really good shape. Value engineering was a large part of that, uh, there's still about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in that bucket, that is value engineering related. So, um, costs that are coming up here shortly, about seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of costs that we need to review and, uh, talk through, make sure we're making the right decision. In turn, that cost will not be a true cost of the project, we're still chewing through that value engineering money. So, no changes from the original contingency. After that, after those changes, the, uh, construction, construction contingency will be sitting about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so still in very good shape, considering where we're at in the project, uh, very healthy, so. That's where we're at right now.
Sounds good.
Any questions?
No, it's a great update.
Sounds like you're doing the job you were hired to do.
Doing our best, doing our best, if there are any questions come up, by all means, stop in, we're there every day, I'd be happy to help out, and you just want to check for, check it out.
Sounds great. Thanks Derek.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it.
All right, next up, like, commercial industrial call, and there was one held yesterday regarding some utility upgrades and infrastructure for Northern Davies County. Very good call. And next we got the meeting minutes from June eleventh. Were there any revisions, commissioners? If not, an entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. And through some, we know highway update today. Next up, we got Wes Boggs, Grant Nathan, good morning.
Guys, if you're well. All right. So good morning, just wanted to go over a couple of the grants that we're looking at. I apologize for missing the last meeting, um, we had the, um, adjuster in from Lexington, from the storm, so had to meet up with him, um, so I know that was kind of out of order. We ended up getting a grant for the golf course, which we do own, but is controlled by a management team, um, so we kind of did a grant through them, they needed some things, um, so we ended up applying for, uh, some Bermuda grass, and they gave us seventeen hundred and fifty dollars for that, um, so that'll just be a one day thing, just, you know, put it in house and, um, get that fairway done. We may end up applying with them again soon, um, so that would be next quarter. Uh, our beach house is pretty rough, a lot of our facilities are from the seventies, so we need a new couple restrooms. Uh, the beach house has been leaking for several years now, and is actually affecting the structure of the building, um, so we've got three quotes on that, it should be about seventy grand or so to get the roof that we want. Um, so we may look at a couple different sources for that money, I think the park's gonna need to fork, fork some over, and then, uh, the Martin County Community Foundation would be an excellent source for some of that as well. Given that's something that the entire public uses, and that's kind of what they're after, or things that, um, are not just specific for certain age groups and things of that nature. The other grants to discuss would be the layer grant, um, so I know you guys were aware of that a good while back, I applied for that last year, I think in November. What that is, is to dredge the basins, so that's an eighty twenty, we would have to pay twenty percent, they would give eighty. Typically, there's only a hundred thousand awarded from the DNR for each dredging project. If you look at those two photos there, that'll kind of illustrate, uh, what we're talking about, um, gives you a better perspective of what it looks like in the summer, I think the last pictures I would have brought in would have been winter. The large basin, you'll notice with the tuft of grass, kind of in the front of the picture there, is seventeen acres, that's supposed to be a seventeen acre lake with six foot deep, it's completely full, I could drive a four wheeler and walk across there right now. So that really needs done. That one in particular, we've kind of got figured out, I believe, Mark Wickman's a farmer that lives right next door to that, uh, I think we could pump all that sediment up into his land, and he's willing to do that. It's great farmland, so the initial study that Jameson had done showed that it was eighty-five percent sand, but we didn't really believe that, um, so we had an external source, test all that, and it's actually not, so it's really good fertilizer and sediment that kind of came off the farm fields, there's a lot of manure in there, um, things like that, so that's, it's really high in phosphorus and really good for both algae and then growing crops, so, um, hopefully we'll have some local farmers that will take that. The smaller sediment basin, I haven't located an exact place to put all that material, but I'm sure that we will, I think we'll probably start with that first one, since that one's completely full. You'll notice the other picture's got some water in it, um, that's at most six inches deep, so there's just nothing there, that one's also completely full. That, I think, was a huge source of the algae in the lake, there's a incredible video, if I get all your cell phone numbers, I can show you, it's, it was taken, I think, two or three years ago before I was here, but it's literally a river of green coming out of that basin. So as it flows into the lake, when you get a large rainfall, it pushes all that algae into the lake, and it was like a straight up green stripe brighter than my shirt, um, out in the lake, and I think that really seeds the lake with those cells. So this year, um, I worked out a pretty cool deal, in exchange for our science, I was getting hundreds of gallons of enzymes for free, um, they're normally like, pretty expensive. So I've dumped hundreds and hundreds of, well, two hundred and eighty gallons so far, normally it's thirty bucks a gallon, so we got a pretty sizable deal on that in exchange for essentially what'll be a really good marketing, uh, project for them, so they have all my data for years, and then I could get free stuff for that. You look at the data that I just took last Monday, so I do cell counts every Monday, and on that page I gave you, there should be three different, um, sets of numbers there. The large basin, I normally don't test, so that's kind of irrelevant because there's no water in there, I just did it once. The small basin, I test every week, as well as the beach that we swim in, um, you can see that the, the basin is actually cleaner than the lake, so it's interesting. There's a mat of algae on top, but there's no blue green, so I do both testing below the surface, um, so the cell counts are actually higher in the main lake than the basin, so I think those enzymes are definitely working. What those do is break up organic material, so a lot of that manure that's running into the lake gets broken up by those enzymes, and then the algae can't feed on it. That's kind of what I'm doing right now, I've got some other lake treatments that we're looking at for the year, um, and grants would be associated with those. But, I don't think that enzyme's a full lake treatment, it's just not really designed for that, um, it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars and isn't a long-term thing. So I've talked to a company that, um, it's Blue Green Water Company, uh, they started in Israel, it's a granular product that actually floats peroxide based, and that'll settle through the water column and kill the algae, um, so I'm looking at using them this year and possibly next year. That's a couple hundred grand per, you know, per year, at least, so it's a little bit out of our realm of what we can pay for still. Pretty happy with what we're doing this year, moving away from aquatic control, our numbers are actually better than they were last year without the algae side, and then there's no risk to the fish. So we were able to treat one-sixth of the lake for the last number of years based on what money we can raise, and it just isn't working, it's just not enough to do anything. So I think if we end up, you know, getting some good money through the Conservancy District or other sources, I think we can treat the whole lake and make it pretty good. It's possible, I mean, I went swimming in Crane on Saturday, I could see fifteen feet down, that's not far away from Boggs, so if we can clean up the watershed, I think, and make our lake, you know, it's not gonna be Tahoe, but I've got maybe five inches of visibility, and they have fifteen feet, and it's just ten miles up the road, so, big difference there. TAF Law and Banning Engineering have signed with us, um, it's going pretty well, there's a few hiccups, things are moving a little slower just because of the pieces of the puzzle I need, I'm still waiting on, um, like, getting the park appraised, so I've got all the Martin County parcels, um, Davies County, I'm still waiting on getting the, the correct values for those, and then once we get those pieces together, I'm sending them to them, go ahead, go ahead.
Explain again why that's important to, to what we're doing with the Conservancy.
Yeah, so we need fifty-one percent of the land value to vote yes, um, so given that the park is a large part of that land value, um, we wanted to get the park appraised for both Martin and Davies so we could have a vote too. And the parcels that I, I didn't want to get too far into it, but like, the parcels that I received on Davies were just coded wrong, I think, um, so like, I was flipping through it, and I noticed like thirty-three acres would be assigned to like five hundred bucks, um, so that wasn't really, you know, obviously a great, you know, ratio for us. So I wanted to get those redone, and then, once they have all that, then we have the total land value of the watershed, including the park, and then we can get the petition done.
What type, what type of timeframe, is this a, a year, three years?
I'd say a year.
One year, okay.
But I need all those pieces to move forward, so as long as that stuff comes, you know. But right now, Banning's working on getting a quarter-quarter description, I don't know exactly why that has to be done, but it's an old law on the Conservancy Districts that we can't just use maps. Both the engineering team and I thought we could just get really detailed maps and submit those, they're just easier to read, they make more sense, but it's more of a verbal description that is required, so, um, that has to be drawn up by the engineering team and then stand by the law team. So that'll be their next step, and they're working on that simultaneously. TAF right now is just waiting on those appraisals. Also, I want to really, uh, I guess praise the GIS rep, Sean Scott, he's been very helpful with that, I know you guys work with him, he's done a really good job for us. So I started a water committee last year, um, we had a pretty wide variety of backgrounds in there, including some farmers, we had some Amish community members, things of that nature. The Amish community in particular wrote hundreds of letters to farmers, like handwritten letters, and I think it made a real difference. There's, I'm getting tons of reports of, uh, cover crops, more cover crops than ever, grass stitches, animals out of the streams, um, people are building cover manure piles, things like that, and it's, I think it's helping, so I think those numbers, I mean, it almost has to be right, we had a lot of rain, it's warm, those numbers are better than last year, and I'm not doing algae side treatment, so, like, it's moving in the right direction. I, I don't want to say our lake is nice or healthy, but it's better.
Better, yeah.
So, that's exciting. Do you guys have any questions on grants, or kind of, anything?
No, is, is, is there anything you need from us regarding those grants?
Okay.
Do you need a letter of support?
Um, I don't know that I do, um, possibly for the layer grant, I'm a little worried about that, um, they actually, as I mentioned, normally they only do a hundred thousand for the basins, I had the representative come down here that's in charge of that, and he told me that we allocate sixty-five thousand out of our lake enhancement fund, which actually drained it this spring, kind of another reason why I didn't do the lake treatment, um, now we're ramping that up, um, that comes off, you know, anybody that coming in the gate and that kind of thing, pays four dollars to that, so in the summer, we ramped that up, and now I've got some money. But that did take our money this spring, and then they would give us about two sixty if awarded, and that money's gonna help, dredging's not gonna go very far, but they'll help pay the engineers to figure out exactly what to do. And then after that, then I think I've got some real ammo to go to, you know, the government and say, "Hey, here's our project, got my ducks in a row, here's what we need," and I think, you know, we'll look for grants and government funding that way. I'm a little worried though, I talked to him yesterday, the guy that came down, um, his name's Doug Newsbaum with the DNR, he said that they increased the boat past funding this year, so there's like an additional tax when you register your boat, and that's what they're expecting, getting extra funding for, and he says it's lower than what they thought. So I don't know how much we're gonna get. He picked those numbers for me, so he told me to save sixty-five grand so he could give me two sixty, but I'm becoming skeptical if we're gonna get that much now. So that's definitely unfortunate, because I need, I need that money to pay the engineers to get it, you know, really figured out and start that process. The LWCF, we've been a partner with for a long time, I think it was formed back in the seventies, um, Jameson took a grant with them, there's a slight hiccup there, our deed has to have the LWCF language on it, um, it's protected forever, um, so I need to make sure that our, our main park deed is kind of amended per their requirements, um, but I do have a grant that I can apply with them in August first, so if you guys are willing to do a letter, I may, may take you up on that, might be very helpful. That would be a fifty-fifty match, um, we wouldn't get anything until next October, and that would be for a restroom, two, most of our restrooms are from seventy-two, and I just, they can't be nice, like, there's nothing we can do to really fix them up, so, those need replaced badly, but they're expensive, they have to be handicap accessible, they have to be block for storm shelters, um, so, you know, they're, they're pretty expensive, and I don't know, I don't think the park can pay for one on our own, so, that's something we need to get matched at least, and kind of do them, you know, one at a time. I know it's, I don't want to take up too much time, the storm was definitely pretty rough, so we've had a rough month, uh, it's been really busy, we've got hundreds and hundreds of trees down, we opened up all our campsites, we got all the trails open, but the disc golf courses are maybe destroyed, I think we can get the nine hole open, but the eighteens, I don't know, it's gonna take over a year to get that fixed up. Insurance is not gonna cover any of the woods, so they only cover what was landing on the structures, which is not a whole lot. So, park looks okay, it's not gonna be permanently damaged, I wouldn't say, but it's, it's a bummer, I mean, we lost hundreds of trees from the seventies, so, it's, you know, not what it used to be. Like, that's it, yeah, hopefully, you know, moves on fast, I think, like I said, about a year away, so.
Bob, you did great work, you, you did good stuff.
Thank you, yeah, it's just a piece of my job.
Radiative, impactful impact fund, maybe, and just been helping that out, as well as uplands ROI.
Okay. Yeah, if you guys know of any funding sources, I'm new at this, so.
You run those traps.
Cool, thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Nathan. All right, next up, we got the early voting, um, contract for the Rotan building, and to rent that for the month. I think everyone should have received a copy of that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd just like to add another early voting location on a Saturday, and that's at the Rotan, we use that building for Election Day, and they don't charge us for Election Day, but for the Saturday, they could rent it out for a wedding or whatever, and I understand. So if you see on the contract, the normal price if someone from the public would rent it would be a thousand and fifty, but they're knocking it down to five fifty for us, and I do have that in my budget, so.
Okay, great.
Need to have that signed.
Any questions, commissioners?
No.
How to entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Lauren. And next up, we have the SIDC Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Feedback. I think it's more disinformation only. They must have done some, some survey, and it just shows the different, um, responses from the different counties.
They, they, I think they had a series of meetings.
Okay.
And with some of the stakeholders, certainly not all of them, some of the stakeholders, and those were the things that came out of those meetings, I believe.
Gotcha. All right, sounds great, there's no questions, let's take that under advisement. Uh, next, we have the annual information for continuing disclosure compliance from Baker Tilly. This is for fiscal year ending in two thousand and twenty-three. It basically just reviews some of the, the net assess, assess valuation, which the total net assess valuation of Davies County currently is one point nine billion dollars. Shows the tax rates, um, that this is good information, information that we don't tend to realize, that two thousand and twenty, the property tax rates were point eight six, and now they're point seven seven. Now, that's a tax rate, not the assess value. So I think the tax rate, we would all like to see that go down.
Yeah.
So that's good. So, and then the large taxpayers, yeah, a lot of detailed information regarding how much taxes we're collecting, who they're going to, so it's actually really good information. If there's not any questions on that, we'll enter that into the record. Okay, next up, we've got the courthouse covenant monitoring questionnaire that Commissioner Taylor got us into, nine and a half years ago, and I followed his lead.
We only got one more year after this one.
That's got, uh, the skylight does look beautiful, uh, so, it was the right decision, and, uh, and actually worked out just fine. So this is just, uh, that we, we received a grant for the fifty thousand dollars for the skylight, uh, there's a covenant there that, um, we agree to do certain things, uh, I'll just touch on a couple of them, um, you know, are there any obvious or suspected structural problems with the skylight? The answer's no. Any future plans for repair, yes, and the renovation, that's already been approved. Yeah, is, is there a particular urgency regarding any of these threats above? No, so, basically, they just want to make sure that we're maintaining the integrity of that historical building, which obviously we are with the investment we're making into it, so, um, everything looks proper, so.
Yeah.
There's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion made, made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Can I do that one more time, then you're done?
Yeah, one more time, and it was worth it, I mean, it was good.
And then all hurdles, you gotta jump all the way through it.
Next up, our annual covered bridge certification.
All those covered bridges we got, huh?
We still have zero, to my knowledge, so. Unless you guys know of any?
No.
Well, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Oh, yeah, I guess, June fourteenth, okay. It's already, it's approved at the last meeting. Okay, do you need this hard copy? This is, looks like the original. Okay, could you email me a copy of that? Okay, great. Okay, next up, I just put this on here just for zoning discussion, just a high level, just to get, kind of get the, the evaluation started. We've implemented zoning about ten years ago, and I think it's just, would be good, good business practices, just to bring it back up for discussion ten years later, to see, is it working? How we think it should be working? Um, do we need to tweak it? Do we need to leave it alone? I know we got two new commissioners coming in for next year, so. Just from my personal perspective, this isn't necessarily a decision I'm expecting us to make soon. But I want to kind of open it up so we can start getting feedback regarding our own zoning. Out of the ninety-two counties, you probably have it five different ways. And there's pros and cons to every decision, so. Just wanted to put that on there, wind us from thirty thousand foot view. Just, are we totally content? Leave it alone? Should we evaluate it? And just wanted to open that up for discussion with the commissioners.
Zoning's not an issue unless you live next to one of the properties that need to be addressed. And the issue still seems to be the two-mile radius, who's responsible for what. So I would strongly recommend working something out with the city, where there's just more clarification, because somebody calls their office, and they say, well, it's outside the city, and then they call ours, they say, well, it's in the two-mile radius. That just needs to be clarified on what action, if any, can be taken.
Two-mile radius, just like a no-man's land. It only works when, uh, everything's going good. If you want to have to control something, then nobody wants to put their hands in the pot, so.
And we're kind of, kind of halfway. We've got our toe dipped in a little bit. Either we should have it and enforce it and have things that are factual and be acted on, or be abandoned.
Yeah, I would agree with that. It just seems like we have this fake layer of protection. And I mean, it has done some good. It's, we're giving some, some people, uh, voice to stand on, whether we agree with the outcome or not, you know. They at least had that voice.
But I sat on the committee from day one, and, uh, got all the way through that. I mean, it took us forever to get that thing written, and to get it halfway, probably three-fourths of the way done, and then we came back and done a bunch of reviews. But I'm still, you know, I farm for a living, and I want to have my own say, I'm, I control my own land, you know. And if tomorrow's only one way, I wouldn't be, wouldn't be bad about it at all, you know. You just gotta figure out what's best for everybody.
Reason it was put in, in the first place was, like, the interchanges with I sixty-nine and Westgate.
That part, yeah.
You can't spot zone, so they tried to find.
Right.
Happy medium.
Well, that's a good thing, too, is with, um, the city annexing I sixty-nine, that's under city zoning now.
Yeah, so all you got's one other exit up there.
And then with Westgate, with the CCR document, that's dealing with Green County and Martin County. Um, there's a covenant, something, and restriction document they overlay on that area. Um, so there's, there's ways to mitigate that now, but I wish there was a way. I mean, when I looked into the two-mile radius a number of years ago, because I, I, why is it two miles? Because, I mean, if you go to the border of Washington, and you walk thirty minutes, and you walk at a three-and-a-half mile pace, if you walk at a four-mile pace, which is, that's like my wife's pace, you're gonna walk thirty minutes, and the entire area is zoned. So, I've not got a clear answer from the state on why is it two miles.
Isn't that their statute, though?
Yeah, but then when I ask them, why is it two?
Why, why is it?
They, they don't know, because, for instance, in Washington, there's, could be areas where it should be three miles. Or there should be, there could be areas where it can only be a half a mile. Because when you're in that area, you're getting, you can't vote for those folks, but you're being, um, zoned by people that you can't vote for. And that's the, kind of, the rub, but. Yeah, please come up to the microphone, that'd be great. You change your hat real quick on your way out.
Uh, in relation to the, in relation to the, uh, two-mile limit, the two-mile limit is there because that's what the state said. Now, why they pick two miles, I don't know. But the city can zone up to two miles. Here in Washington, we have elected not to use a two-mile bubble. Uh, some areas are two miles, some areas are mile and a half. Tried to use identifiable roads, boundary lines, so that nobody has an eye. You know, that bubble just doesn't go through the middle of somebody's field. What the city can do in that two miles is zone development. It cannot zone rules, you know, like weed control, stuff like that, uh, just potential use development.
Buildings, distress.
Buildings, and, uh, you know, put it in an industry next to a residential area, something like that. So usage is the only thing that the city can do inside that two-mile. We continually have people from the two-mile complaining about somebody's weeds, somebody's water overflow and stuff like that. But that's simply something that the city cannot take care of. It, it's only if somebody wants to come in and build a factory, they want to build, uh, an apartment, uh, we, we can zone the usage of that, and whether it's industrial, residential. But that, that's the only thing that the city can do. And as far as the two-mile limit, you know.
Does county have the ability to go in and plant those distressed properties in?
Yeah. I think, I think that we could if we modified the contract with the city, correct?
Pardon?
If we modified the contract with the city, we could ask them to, um, enforce its ordinances within a, in its two-mile radius.
It can.
But there again, you get to the.
It would have to enforce our ordinances.
But there again, you get to that point where Nathan was just talking about, is it fair for the people who live outside the city to have city rules enforced, where they don't have a vote?
In this particular case, and not that I'm supportive of it, but in this particular case, the commissioners would grant you the authority to enforce it on our behalf. So you're the enforcer of our rules in that two-mile radius. So if those people didn't like it, then they can vote us out as commissioners.
Well, but we would have to adopt similar to the city's safe building code, and have that on our books, and then we would contract with them to enforce our ordinance.
And then pay them the appropriate.
But that's between you, the mayor, and the city council.
Yeah, yeah, without question. And that's where it turns into, it turns into a couple hundred thousand dollars, because if you have one belly button, I mean, that's a hundred thousand dollar total cost.
Yeah.
And then, how much money are we willing to spend on this? And then, where do we get that money from?
So if we don't have any control over that two-mile radius, we don't need zoning. Well, but if we put in the right things in place, we would have control over it. And again, the bottom line is, we've got a few properties that need to be addressed.
We do.
One up by North Davis High School, that's been an eyesore for years.
Yeah, it's terrible.
You've got basically a junkyard on two thirty-one leading to the tech park, and there's an abandoned gas station in the tech park that the owners refused to clean up, and they've been offered help. And, but we've got nothing on the books that allows us to encourage them.
And, and one of the things to look at zoning, uh, it doesn't, if it's done correctly, it doesn't keep you from doing what you want to do with your property. It protects you from having somebody else come in and do something that will damage your property, your, your property values.
In fact, I agree with that, and, and it's so expensive to do correctly. And that's kind of the rate limiting step, is you, we, for countywide zoning, just in my opinion, we would need a department of two or three people, full-time people. Because, I mean, we're gonna implement, because we all want it implemented, like, within the radiuses of these eco, of these centers, these hubs. But other, once we put this in place, you know, up in Upsum or down south of Offordsville, and, you know, these rural lands would be under the same oversight. But it's not really productive to clean up a house that doesn't have a neighbor versus, so the commissioners ultimately would have to have the control of that, um, of that, um, triage, of what properties get cleaned up first. But it would take a team of two or three people.
But that, that's a whole different thing besides zoning. Derelict properties.
Well, I, I use zoning and unsafe building ordinances. I use them to kind of.
Yeah, but they're two different things.
I understand, but they're administered by the same, they'd be administered by the same department.
Yeah.
Uh, so if you do one, you might as well do the other, so.
But the only thing that I was concerned about, it seemed like confused a little bit about what the city can do in that two-mile limit. And, and basically, it's only regulate usage.
Yeah, because it's, so that, that helps clarify, because there is definitely confusion.
Confusion, yeah.
Yeah. Now, if you want to make a interlocal with the city to enforce in that two-mile limit, rules that you guys want to put for that two-mile limit, then that's a whole different.
Right.
Bag.
Yeah, and we started those conversations a couple of years ago. But the rate limiting step was the commissioners had, but in my opinion, the commissioners had kind of the final say. What we didn't want to do is, they go two miles out and clean up a building, and then there's a building a half a mile out.
Yeah, but there, you're talking about derelict buildings, and that's not zoning.
That's going back to your original point.
Yeah.
If we wanted to implement the city's ordinances in the two-mile radius.
Yeah.
Uh, it, ultimately, the commissioners would have to have the final say.
That was the biggest thing for the APC when we just, when we was doing zoning, trying to figure, figure out exactly what to do. Because if you're out in rural Davis County, out in a county road somewhere, and you farm, and you got a bunch of stuff, stockpiled and stuff, you know, that, some people don't find appealing to see. But then, you know, it's, it's.
Could the ordinance be written to where it would separate those two? In other words, if it doesn't have an adverse impact?
Yeah, but if you're out there in the middle of nowhere, and you have an abandoned house and it's grown up.
So you don't have to enforce it out by the river, but yet you can in the two-mile radius. That would be a legal question, I guess.
Because, I mean, I think we all want it to look nice around cities and towns.
Right.
And, and economic engines, right, of the county, where those might be.
And your main highways and stuff like that.
High-visibility areas.
I mean, but that's up to you guys, it's just.
Yeah, we're just having a discussion out there.
I think, you know, if we already keep zoning, and you have, you do do that, have high-visibility areas, two-mile radiuses and stuff like that, I would be in, in favor of that. But if you're gonna, like, bear here for the whole county as a blanket, some of these farms would be in trouble. It's not, it's not, I mean, they, they got it.
That, that's, you, you can define what agricultural is, and, and stockpiles or whatever. And, and just, uh, critique of the zoning code. In, in the county zoning code, it has, uh, you have to come back. If you grant somebody a variance to build, have a family-run residence or business, and they want to expand, then they've got to come back. In a city, if we can give somebody, uh, a variance to have business or an industry, uh, on a plot of land, it doesn't matter how big it gets. They don't have to come back again unless they expand outside that plot line. So I, I think that's something you guys need to look at. That's, to me, that's just, uh, a stupid bureaucratic, who, who controls how, what percent it is.
Well, you know how this works. We, we hire a consultant, they take a boilerplate that they've already created from another county, they charge us the same fee, and on page ninety-eight, it's got these stipulations on it that, when we implemented it.
You know, to me, it's just, if you have a family-run residence or, or business, and they keep it on that plot, and you've given permission to do it, why do they need to come back?
I agree.
So, anyway, I've.
I appreciate that, so.
Go back and shut up.
No, you're good. This is, a lot of good points, because we're all in agreement, the high-visibility areas, um, areas near cities and towns, and then economic areas. We want to protect those areas, and then lessen the burden on everyone else. So maybe I can reach out to the APC and BZA, because we've got people on polar opposites, and I want all of them to participate. And we challenge them to fix the zoning, or we're gonna consider fixing it ourselves.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I mean, we, we've had basically the same approach for ten-plus years. Um, kind of the idea was light zoning, not like an urban area, but, but light for an ag area, with the intent to, uh, slow down or stop bad things that the, the community deems to be bad. And I, I think for zoning light, it's, it's worked in that regard. I mean, the APC doesn't meet a lot, because it would be for certain purposes, to revise the ordinance for doing specific things. But certainly, it's a policy question. I mean, what, what do, what does the county executive want zoning to look like? We're surrounded by a number of counties that don't have zoning. Um, so, I mean, you make a good point that in, in the ten years that we've had it, we've, Westgate's changed with CCRs, the city's taken in an interchange. We still have some issues that could be dealt with, but, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a process that, in my opinion, if any changes are made, and again, I'm just making this up as I sit here, be January of twenty-six. I mean, this would be a.
It's a process, you gotta put in place, it'd be a process, it'd be a process, no matter what you do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, keep in mind that zoning is what kept the railroad tie manufacturer out of Davis County. It did, it stopped it in its tracks.
Yeah, which, some people love that, and some people hate that, and, um.
I was for that project, but.
Yeah.
It just didn't work out.
So, okay, a good discussion, good decision.
Larry, Mike, you want to send an APC board?
Yeah.
Take my position.
All right. Next up, the handbook committee. Got no handouts for the handbook committee. So.
Jen, Jen talked about that a little bit. I don't know if you guys have, I haven't really participated in some of the discussion, but there were a handful of things that she wanted to see changed in it. Um, the last time we did the handbook was maybe eight, ten years ago. And the time before that was maybe fifteen years ago.
Okay.
So I, I think there's an effort to look at it, make sure it's, uh, it reads the way that, that department heads would like it to read. And Jen's gonna have the most input.
I think even our, our HR needs to be, and that stuff needs to be in our handbook. I'd rather have a meeting here.
There shouldn't be anything in the handbook that we're not willing to enforce.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, like, hiring and firing and stuff like that.
Yeah.
It needs to be in there, it needs to be in there.
Okay, well, let's do this. Um, if she's looking for a handbook committee, I'd be more than willing to serve on the handbook committee. But, um, I'll, she can reach out if she has any further questions. All right, uh, next up, we've got the Olan and Westgate bond discussion. Not sure what that is, or who wanted that on the.
Uh, I wanted it on there.
Oh, sure.
The Westgate and the Olan bonds, one of the stipulations, when they were paid off, they should have been transferred back to the county, and that was never done. If you recall, when the two thousand eleven bond was paid off, the redevelopment commission gained control of the property of the Westgate. So that was just one of the provisions of the bond. So, my recommendation is that we institute that. And there's a much bigger picture, should you choose to take this on. That is, I think, the only bond against Edit right now is the two thousand eighteen bond. So if you had control of those assets, whether you sold them or used them for collateral, you could make the case that I would like to see us, as a commission, make the recommendation to take steps to eliminate the Edit tax. That tax was put in to do projects, and at the time, the taxpayer was told that it would be project-specific to grow Davis County. What has happened is, it's been used for other things, especially on the city side, which is their purview. They can do with their money what they want. But it was also told there'd be no administration taken out of that Edit, which isn't the case now, because we're using Edit to pay the development corporation. So, I would just want to clean it up and, and eliminate the Edit tax at the end of the day.
I mean, we've always used Edit to pay the development corporation.
No.
For my ten years.
For your ten years. But prior. For your ten years, but prior to your tenure, county gave this, set up by Jay Myers, fifty thousand dollars from the general fund to the development corporation for administration, go towards administration. And again, there was a contract with the development corporation foundation, but the only time that money was drawn was project-specific.
And I'm not trying to be argumentative, but when you were director, you didn't voice any concerns receiving edit?
Well, it was project-specific. It always went, the council and the commissioners always knew where that money was going. The contract was just mechanism to get it into the foundation.
I'm not going to argue, but I've been commissioner for ten years, and that's not the case, in, in my opinion. But I just didn't know if there was something to change, eliminating taxes, I mean, you get, my, my eyes lit up, so, I mean, I'm all about.
Bottom line is, what the edit was put in for, it's no longer being used for, so get rid of it. And even the development corporation foundation, where they were on a track to build buildings and generate revenue on their own, they're away from that now, which is fine. But if they are like that, then they don't need the resources that they're getting. And what you'll see is that, like most cases, we've gotten bigger government, we've gotten bigger development corporation, spending a lot more money on administration. And you can argue whether that's worth it or not, I'm not close enough to it anymore to say it's a good, good deal or a bad deal. But the bottom line is, when that edit was put in, the taxpayer was told it would be project-specific, no administration, and we've gotten away from that.
I think there was a five-year window within it was, it was supposed to go away, but once we borrowed against it, 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 it had to keep going, is that, that's what you're saying?
Well, if there's a bond pledged for that, it has to go. But I think there's an opportunity to do away with it if things are structured properly, and part of that is getting control of Olin and the tech park property that should be under control of the county, back in the county's hands. And Bob, he's left, but he was checking with Lisa Lee, see what her thoughts were, but he hasn't gotten an answer yet.
Okay.
That's why that was on.
What do you propose the next steps be, Ron?
Well, if, if the commissioners are willing to take that step, I think we make the move to, to get Olin transferred back to the county and identify the property that came from the bond issue up there. The bond for Westgate was for the E G and G building. That building was sold, but then that money was used to buy other property. So I think if you research it, you'll find that property is what foundation has pledged to Brian's organization, which really wasn't theirs to pledge or to sign over to Optionton. So whether you want to undo that or not, and I think they could have got a better deal myself, but certainly, the Olin needs to be addressed, but whatever, whatever can be done to generate enough funds or collateral to take care of the bond on the annex and then do away with it.
So you have to check on what, what's left on the bond, and then.
Well, the report we just had, the initial amount was two-point-nine, it sort of has to be less than two-nine. Olin is worth, it costs, I don't know where their lease is at, but their lease has probably got up, but the building was about a four-million-dollar building back in two thousand six. But it would, the appraisal would be based on lease payment, but it's a triple net lease, so it should appraise it three-and-a-half, four-million dollars, I would think.
How about this?
And again, don't mean to cut you off, but the ideal situation would be that the foundation would decide they wanted to continue to own and control those assets, and they actually buy them off the county. That would be the cleanest deal.
Okay, commissioners don't need to own that property, either RDC or somebody else sell them off or something.
But if they did own it, you're looking at close to three-hundred thousand dollars a year that comes on the county.
We don't need to own it, either if we get it back, it needs to either go to RDC or it needs to be sold.
RDC makes sense.
Well, let me, how about this, let me, let's, let's have Jen and Grant maybe evaluate, coordinating, see if we can have a meeting, if they're industrial, commercial, or whatever. If maybe the commissioners and the ED foundation board get together around the table.
Have that discussion.
Let's see if we can meet in executive session.
Some sort of a closed-door session.
The executive board of the foundation, which, you know, is the, they're the main decision-makers, I would say. So could you?
But keep in mind that you and Grant have conflicts here, because you serve on their board, so keep that in mind.
Yeah, we have conflict.
At least have, at least have a discussion, though.
Yeah, but yeah, that's am I on the foundation? Maybe I am, I think I am.
Yes, you are, you're on the executive, you're on the executive board.
I show up to the meetings.
If you're not, you need to be.
Well, I show up to the meetings, I don't know which board I'm actually.
The executive board of the corporation is the foundation.
That's fine, okay, I'm on that.
You're on both, you're on both boards.
By design.
I, I think that the thoughts make sense, so, I mean, I, I, I think the economic development may, that, that organization may not see it as something that they should have to buy, because.
I think that's where the discussion is good.
They don't necessarily buy it, they can just sign it over to us.
Like I said, that the commissioners don't need.
Should have been done, you could make the case, this should have been done ten years ago, and they owes three million dollars.
So why didn't you do that ten years ago?
You don't, you don't want me to answer that.
All right, well. All right, that's good, good discussion, I, I think getting us all around the table, see where we go would be great, so. All right, good. Anything else? Jim, anything from the audience, to get up the order? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve payroll claims and to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. Have a great week, everyone. Have a good Fourth of July. It's gonna be hot, potterini, fair, fair is coming up.